I use a little microphone button to unmute yourselves. And now I shall begin with, with roll call. So Yalitza Checo?
Here.
Matt Ferguson?
Here.
Suzanne Sikora Ludwig? Chris Delatella? Ryan Berger?
Here.
Diana Lopez?
Here.
Bob Cardika?
Here.
John Petrolino?
Here.
George Chidid? Manuel Castaneda?
Here.
Jeff Crum?
Here.
Thank you. We have eight members present.
Dan, would you mind reading the public announcement?
Certainly. Give me one second.
Thank you.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied and that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice at the time, place, and conduct of all public meetings of the planning board of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk and has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall visible to the public through the windows and lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to official newspapers of the city of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger. New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy has issued executive orders limiting the size of public gatherings of individuals until further notice. Furthermore, the CDC has issued guidelines to limit gatherings of groups. The city planning board intends to meet on a regular schedule and meet the guidelines of the Open Public Meeting Act by utilizing teleconferencing and video systems. Public participation at public meetings has been revised and the public may participate through a conference call-in system. Public is encouraged to call into the conference call-in system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in the above notice of the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall visible to the public through the windows. Board professionals will also be available via conference call and video during this meeting as well. All parties on the call will have the opportunity to hear the planning board meeting. During the portions of the meeting that are not open for public comment, all callers from the public will be muted and the board will not be able to hear any comments through the call system. During the public comment periods, I will first read public comments issued to the board, then those on the call-in lines who have been interested in addressing the board will be first organized by last name and called upon to speak. All organized members of the public shall speak once in no more than five minutes in any given public meeting portion. Time will turn with the completion of each five-minute period and I will notify you that your time has expired. Public needing assistance accessing the call-in numbers should call the planning department at 732-745-5050.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask me that every week when we will salute the flag. Fledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, under God, liberty, freedom. Thank you. Can we go over the January 11th meeting? Dan, you're on.
Okay. Eligible voting members who are present tonight are Yalitza Checo, Matthew Ferguson, Ryan Berger, Diana Lopez, Bob Cardika, and John Petrolino.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Thanks, Tom.
I'll second.
Alright. Writing it down. Yalitza Checo?
Yes.
Matthew Ferguson?
Yes.
Ryan Berger?
Yes.
Diana Lopez?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
John Petrolino?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. We have one resolution from the memorial. Am I coming through okay? I'm getting a lot of feedback on my end. Okay. Our resolution tonight is for the application Jersey Avenue School Redevelopment Associates LLC. This is 50 Jersey Avenue Block 205.01, Lot 1.05. This was application PB-2020-16. Dan, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. The eligible voters for this resolution are, that are present here tonight are Yalitza Checo, Matt Ferguson, Ryan Berger, and Bob Cardika.
Wish to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Yalitza Checo?
Yes.
Matt Ferguson?
Yes.
Ryan Berger? Ryan Berger?
Sorry, yes.
I already, thank you. Bob Cardika?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda, we have our public hearing for this evening. Tonight, we'll be discussing an amendment to the land development code to modify the stormwater standards required by the state of New Jersey. Dan, should I turn this back to you to lead?
Just for one second, I'm actually not going to lead because I don't really know too much on engineering stuff, but thankfully, we have an engineer on the call. So, Mr. Dan Burke, city engineer. If you're present, I would like you to take over and give a brief presentation to the, to the board on what this amendment intends to do.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, let me just jump in if I may. This is Arvin Itol, the board attorney. Mr. Burke has been previously sworn, so the testimony that he's providing here this evening will be a sworn testimony. He's a professional for the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a little bit of background, the stormwater regulations were passed in 2004. They have about a five-year term before they're reinvigorated. We're about the third cycle of that. And the, the most recent read adoption of the rules with the, with the current amendments took effect March 2nd of 2020. In that, in that rewrite and update, it's under the stormwater rules NJAC 7:8. There was a requirement to, for municipalities to update their stormwater ordinances to conform with the modifications to the, to the regulations. In each of the three cycles since the original adoption, things get a little bit more stringent each time. Our stormwater regulation, our stormwater ordinance is, is under Title 60.24.270A. And the proposed ordinance that you have in front of you or that you're provided in effect places it in public detail. It's about 30 to 35 pages type written pages. Just as a brief synopsis of the changes. There's about 16 new or amended definitions. The major developments we defined, a couple I'll point out, motor vehicle surfaces, green infrastructure, and regulated perpious surfaces are some of the highlighted areas that, that are touched upon. The stormwater regulations speak to the quality, quantity, recharge, and the rate of runoff for our stormwater, and its intent is to control those things so as to enhance the environment and avoid flooding, downstream flooding and such. That's all I have, just as an overview. Anybody have any questions that I might be able to address?
Okay, Mr. Burke, John Petrolino here. Question. The proposed model ordinance. I apologize, I've been terrible.
John, I apologize for jumping in. I, I only started recording the meeting right now, so I apologize. I'm just, I'm just announcing that I just hit the record button right now. Apologize for that.
Alright, start over. Alright, probably. So, Mr. Burke, the only question that I had was the model ordinance is a floor to what can be enacted. Is that correct, as opposed to a ceiling?
That's correct. There are provisions that allow for it to be more stringent if the municipality wishes. One of the areas that is left open, in addition to be more stringent in specific areas, one area that needs to be defined is the penalty portion. I think I, in, in my transmission of the document to the planning, planning board staff, I indicated what, what is currently in the ordinance, but it, you know, this board might make a recommendation to modify that, update it, or so, you know, as they choose.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Burke. And would you, could I impose upon you to remind us of what the current penalty provision is in the, in the current stormwater ordinance?
I, I'm not sure, but I think it was a maximum $2,500, I think is the number. Dan Dominguez, do you have that by chance?
I'll have to dig it up. If you just give me one second.
That's fine. That conforms with my, with my request.
Thanks, John. Any other questions for, from the board?
This is Bob Cardika. Just so I understand, these amendments are being made to bring the, these regulations into compliance with DEP regulations?
That's correct. It updates the, it will update our ordinance to conform with the latest adoption, which took place and became effective March 2nd of 2020. And it obligated municipalities to up their, up their ordinance or update their ordinances accordingly within a year.
And the document that was provided doesn't, doesn't really track the, the recommended or the, the, the proposed revisions that we're reviewing.
No, it doesn't. As a matter of fact, during the course of the various stakeholders' involvement in the update of the, the regulations, that was one thing that was asked of the DEP staff, and they chose not to be responsive to that. We wanted the various groups that participated, and it had been done in prior iterations, you know, a comparison document showing what the, what the amendments were as, as to the previous one. And, and they chose not to provide that. They, they never gave a reason as to why.
But the document that you provided to us, I mean, also doesn't indicate the, the actual changes that were made to the previous, to the existing document, correct?
No. The document I provided you was from the DEP website. It comes off of their best management practices. You know, it's an, it's an amendable document, but it's substantially that document with, you know, New Brunswick placed in it where, where appropriate and Middlesex County, you know, those, those minor personalizations of it, but it is substantially the base document that the DEP provided.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Any other questions? Dan, thank you for your presentation. Obviously, it's very important for us to stay in compliance with the state regulation. We appreciate your time and assistance in answering our questions and making sure that we stay in compliance.
This is Bob Cardika. Question for Mr. Itol. As a, again, I'm, as a, I'm a DEP employee, however, I'm not familiar with the DEP's stormwater regulations and, you know, I don't really have any involvement with that program. But is it appropriate for me to vote on this, or should I recuse myself from a vote?
No, it's appropriate for you to vote. There's no need for a recusal.
Thank you.
Dan, are you looking for us to make a formal vote? On this?
We have to, um, we do have to vote, but we have to go to public comment first.
Got it.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Arvin.
I'm sorry, Mr. Petrolino, I think I got in under the wire.
Sorry about that. Yeah, no, a quick question. So, so I, I did want to at least propose for the board's consideration that we recommend to the city council a modification which regards to the penalty provision as it pertains to compliance with stormwater ordinance. Considering that this applies to major developments, we're really talking about, at least in my estimation, developers who have the wherewithal to certainly be compliant with, with the ordinance. But I do think it's important that penalty provisions be commensurate with the obligation. So to have a penalty provision that tops out of $2,500, I don't think does enough to provide appropriate alignment of incentives to, to actually comply with your. I would suggest, and perhaps Mr. Itol can opine on this, that if we provided that each day that a violation persists counts as a separate discreet violation for purposes of advocacy. Perhaps that would be an appropriate resolution to align those incentives as a procedure.
And certainly, the board can make that recommendation. And let me just double check with Mr. Burke, just so we understand. Now, this is a model rule that's proposed by the DEP. It's actually a, the model rules themselves are enforced not only by the local authorities, and that's New Brunswick, but also by the DEP, which has jurisdiction on the environmental, the NJDEP has jurisdiction on the environmental issue itself. So, Dan, if I could just confirm with you that this is, this is for, the penalty provision would be for the local provisions, and is that a, a daily? Is that a situation where a daily penalty would be appropriate?
I think in other portions of our, our code, they call a violation, they call a violation out repeatedly as daily. But I, again, I believe that would be up to, that call would be up to the governing body with the, with some guidance from, from the city attorney. I just did look up the, the penalty, and the penalty is not less than 100 and not more than 2,500, what's currently in the, in the ordinance.
I understand. I think Mr. Petrolino's concern was that fines might be a little bit more, perhaps some more teeth, if I can maybe put words in his mouth, if they were actually considered each and every day that there was a violation would constitute a separate offense. And if I'm understanding Mr. Petrolino correctly, and also Mr. Burke, if I understand you correctly, this board can certainly make a recommendation to the governing body that it amend the penalty provision, or the recommendations would be that the penalty provision would include the language that every day would constitute a separate violation. Do I have that right, Mr. Petrolino?
Yes, Mr. Itol. That's correct. Thank you.
Dan, and, and maybe both Daniel Burke and Daniel Dominguez, could you give us a little bit more context? One, had there been any violations during your tenure with the city under which a developer did not comply? And then what existing sticks do we have in place to ensure that they do comply in addition to the penalties, the financial penalties that we propose?
If I may go first, because I deal with this probably less frequently, at least on the planning side. I have seen none, no cases that have come across my desk related to violations of our existing stormwater control ordinance. The, the penalties that currently exist in our code right now are 2,500 or 100 and then 2,500 as, as I think is also in the proposed model rules. So, I mean, I don't know that that's the right amount, but I will, I will say that I have not had to enforce the stormwater ordinance on the back end retroactively, you know, to deal with a non-compliant entity yet. I won't speak for Mr. Burke, but only for myself.
What I can say is that after, after a project leaves the board, it comes through my office for compliance through the construction phase until it is concluded, the construction phase, and the performance bonds are released. So, it's incumbent upon my office with the assistance of outside expecting consultants to ensure that the approvals, along with the, the stormwater requirements are met as, as that have gone through either the zoning board or the planning board. After that time, the regulations require the municipality to continue to monitor public as well as private lands to ensure that the, there is compliance. One of the things that we do with the mechanism is, and you'll see it oftentimes in the resolutions is, or in the compliance statements is, and any fixture, any special fixtures or features of stormwater management on a commercial property that the, the owner and subsequent owners may have to maintain are placed in the deed. So, there is a deed restriction placed on those properties so that they have to, it's noticed very clearly that they have to maintain them. But the municipality, and again, under the guise of the stormwater coordinator, who is, who's the specified person in the municipality that annually makes a report to the DEP as to our compliance actions throughout the year, is the point person for compliance activities at the conclusion of my activity, which follows the board's approvals.
Thanks. Thank you, Dan. And so, so it's fair to say, at least until the CO is issued, there is not only this penalty of $2,500, but also the threat of bond being called and, and whatever they posted. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, it is. I mean, the, the bond would not be released, performance guarantee would not be released if, if the stormwater features that are noted in the plans and approved through the board's actions are not constructed and, and found to be in compliance.
Okay. And this is not, this is not a problem that has been a challenge of ensuring compliance and enforcement in your experience?
I, I would say, again, I'm only, you know, New Brunswick or Shorewatt was just over here, but 18 years of experience as a municipal engineer. And people have gotten more, more in line with complying with the regulations over the years. But one of the, one of my experiences is, over time, those stormwater features tend to be ignored and fall out of maintenance. I'd say the biggest problem is the appropriate maintenance of stormwater features on properties, both by municipalities and, and by commercial entities, or, you know, or, you know, other public entities, be it the school board or some other similar entity. So, it's, it's, some of the maintenance falls by the wayside over time.
That's very, very helpful. Thank you.
Dan, Mr. Burke, do you have any sense for what other municipalities who have already passed their update to the stormwater ordinance have done with respect to penalties?
No, I have not. I have not looked at that. I could look into that. I belong to the statewide municipal engineers group, and I could put out that question. It'll take a little time to get some responses.
Thank you.
Any other board questions for our professionals? Alright. We'll open it up to the public. Dan, do you want to read the announcement for public?
Certainly. Oh, excuse me. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting to public comment on this amendment for five minutes per person. In order to assure that the planning board can hear from the public and the public can hear public comments, I will organize the speakers in order by last name. At the moment, I will unmute the public call-in and we're facilitate people being able to unmute themselves. Star six again, if you're on the phone, or what do you call it, with a little microphone, if you're on computer. At that time, I will ask those with last names, starting from A, to provide me your last name, first name, and home address. I will confirm that the information is correct and then move on to the next person alphabetically from A to Z. Upon completion of asking for all last names, I will ask anyone who else would like to be placed on the initial list of speakers that we may have missed. And then we will close the list of speakers. We will then move through the list of speakers by calling the person by name and permitting them five minutes to speak. Once we complete the list, I will close the public comment portion. Please be mindful that your voice is being telephonically transmitted to speak fully and clearly for the benefit of all. I will ask, please, while folks are initially unmuting themselves so that we can all hear each other and then begin the registration process. Everyone is now able to, to unmute themselves. So, if, if there's anybody out there, again, star six if you're on the phone, a little microphone if you're on a computer. Anybody with the letter A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z. Is there anyone who we missed who would like to be on the list of speakers? Anyone at all? Mr. Chair, we have no members of the public wish to, wish to speak on this proposed ordinance.
Great. Thank you. Can we get a motion? At least for the, the, is there a, what, Dan, is there a resolution? How, how are we? Moving forward?
So, so this, this gets adopted by, by vote and then is referred back to the council for, for adoption, basically by, by letter?
Okay.
Essentially cover memo?
Okay. So, given that we have a proposed, or I think we'll likely have a proposed change or at least suggestion to the council, how do we go about documenting this? Maybe that's a question for everyone.
I think that's a question for Mr. Itol.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest is, this, this goes back to the governing body in the form of a letter indicating that it's the, you know, the planning board has considered it and make the final following recommendations. So, if there, if the board is looking for unanimity in its recommendations, my suggestion is that perhaps Mr. Petrolino can make a motion to recommend to the governing body the adoption of this ordinance with that proposed change. And if there is a second and the motion carries and we don't need to address the second motion, if that doesn't get seconded and carried the first time around with the proposed inclusion of the, the penalties as being a daily violation.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that.
So, maybe I can put the first motion on the record then, Mr. Petrolino, with your permission?
Please. Thank you.
So, if there is a motion, the motion would be to recommend to the governing body the adoption of the proposed ordinance with a recommendation from this board that the fines and the the offenses be constant, each day constitutes a separate violation for purposes of assessing a fine. Is that correct, Mr. Petrolino?
Thank you, Mr. Itol. That is correct, and I will make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Good math.
Alright, Yalitza Checo?
Wait, wait, just to discuss this for a second. So, I personally feel, given the testimony of Mr. Burke, I, I don't have enough information to determine if that's fair. I, I just, I have I just, I have no, I truly have no context for whether a per diem penalty is rational or reasonable. And so I know Mr. Burke suggested that he would use some research to see what other towns would, how, how they enforce this, and how they've written those penalties. My suggestion may be to review those, and then take Mr. Burke's findings and recommendations to the council with the letter that we're going to send.
Mr. Petrolino, would you like to incorporate that in the motion as well?
Um, I mean, I certainly could be convinced to do that, although I guess in counterpoint to the, the Mr. Chairman's statement, I did think that I heard that Mr. Burke and Mr. Dominguez concurd that many, if not most of the penalties in the municipal code relating to land use did accrue on a daily basis as a separate offense. And if I'm incorrect on that, please, please, please correct that. But if that is the case, then this would simply be in alignment and conformity with other statutes that impose penalties on a daily basis. If, if it is the overwhelming consensus of other municipalities that the proposed penalties in the, in the model statements are sufficient, then clearly I, I would not demand that we step outside of that, but, you know, I, I wouldn't want it to simply be a judgment called that then eviscerated. If that makes sense.
Yeah. So I think it's a question, right, John, back to Mr. Dominguez and Burke, about whether we know if this is per diem as well as other penalties that are imposed are done so on a per diem basis?
Correct. That, that's the first question, then. If we get past that question in the negative, then to your point, Mr. Chairman, with respect to what other municipalities are doing, I guess if the recommendation is simply to provide numbers of municipalities that have adopted the model as proposed versus that have adopted a stepped-up penalty feature, I think that's appropriate. I, I would simply suggest that it's probably not what I would agree to if, if the recommendation were for Mr. Burke and Mr. Dominguez to be making the ultimate recommendations to the council.
Mr. Dominguez and Mr. Burke, any, any clarity on the penalties?
All I would say is, the, what's in the current ordinance, the 100 to 2,500, it's not, it's not provided by the DEP. That's not in the model. The model leaves it up to the municipality, as I recall, to, to make that decision. Certainly, I would say it's above my pay grade, it's something that either this board and/or the governing body, along with legal consultant, consultant should, I believe should make. I would be happy, like I said, to query my peers and see what, you know, what kind of information I could, I could gather on it, though.
And I think the question is more around the penalties that are imposed for existing violations. One for the existing stormwater, is that, we don't know, right? It's, if it's on a per diem basis, or if it is treated on a one-time basis? And then I think there's a related question of, can we assume that it's on a per diem basis, since most of the violations that the town issues are done on a per diem basis? Is that, John, feel free to jump in if I'm misrepresenting your comments or your question.
No, not at all, Mr. Chairman. I think that that's, that's what it is. At, at the end of the day, I just want to make sure that our penalties are appropriate to incentivize people to comply. Obviously, it's heartening to hear that we've not had occasion to have to enforce penalties in the, in the tenure of Mr. Dominguez and Mr. Burke, but obviously, they're there for a reason. So the long is, what we have has enough teeth, that would be satisfactory to my, to, to me. But yes, the way that you characterize it is, is alignment, I think.
And I'm, John, I'm fully in agreement on that, that point. I think my question is, I just don't have enough information to determine whether per diem is fair and reasonable. I, I don't think I've ever had to deal with this issue, so I just don't know.
Is it, is it reasonable to table this for the April meeting, so at which time we might have a little bit more information to base our vote?
Mr. Chairman?
Can I just add something? I, Dan Dominguez, just pulled up the violation penalties for the zoning code. I was looking through the land code, I couldn't find anything specific, but it is, each and every day is considered in the zoning code its own separate violation.
Okay. That's helpful.
And in terms of answering that one question, and I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that for most of the dialogue, I, I was unable to hear because it was a very bad connection on my end, but I did hear, I think it was Mr. Cardika's question with regards to whether it would be appropriate to table it. The municipalities, like Mr. Burke had indicated, these NJDEP regulations went into effect on March the 2nd. The developers that come before the board are subject to those NJDEP regulations, the new standards. However, there's no enforcement mechanism, and unless we have adopted an ordinance, and that the ordinance has also been approved by the county, we wouldn't be able to enforce that against the developers on new application. So it, it does affect the time of application rule. I would recommend to the governing, I'm sorry, to the planning board that they move on this today with a recommendation, even if it's a, a recommendation that several other things be looked at, for instance, the, the daily violation aspect.
And the, the, the daily application of the penalty, again, is just a recommendation, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Any other, any other board members have thoughts? I think we sort of had two different ideas on the table. One is to send a letter recommending $25, $2,500 a day per diem, and then the other recommendation is to allow the, the city council, once they receive more feedback from the city professionals, to determine the appropriate penalties.
Mr. Chairman, there is a motion in the second on the floor to have the governing body consider the per diem penalties currently, and that was proffered by Mr. Petrolino. So unless Mr. Petrolino withdraws that motion, we would have to either vote that motion up or down, but there's a subsequent motion.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to be, just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, that, that's to frame the currently drafted penalties on a per diem basis, so it's a range of $100 to $2,500. It's not just a $2,500 per diem penalty provided.
Understood. Yep, yep. Thanks for that clarification. All right, Mr. Dominguez, you want to?
Yep, okay. Um, I, I forget, I know, I believe, Matthew, you seconded, but I forget who motioned, or, oh, it was John. Right, okay. Um, through Arv. Uh, okay, Yelitza Checo?
Yes.
Matt Ferguson?
Yes.
Ryan Berger?
Yes.
Diana Lopez?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
John Petrolino?
Yes.
Manil Katsina?
Yes.
Jeff Crum?
My, there's no, just for a sole lack of information.
And so, Dan, the, the letter would recommend, as the motion indicated, and Chairman Crum's recommendation that the, the basis for his no vote would be included.
Okay.
Thank you. Right. Next on the agenda, we have other, other discussion items.
Do we have any? I don't have the agenda in front of me.
There's nothing with it on the agenda.
Okay. Done.
Great, okay. Other matters of interest to the public? Would you like to announce?
Given that we don't have a significant group of attendees, and it didn't seem like anyone wanted to comment earlier, I, I'm going to, again, float to the, to everyone in attendance, if anyone wants to comment for up to five minutes per person, to announce themselves, and I'll put them on the list. Star six if you're on the phone, little microphone if you're on computer, unmute yourselves. Anyone at all? Is there anyone who wants to comment? Last call. Seeing none?
Very good. Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
This is mine.
Bob Card, second.
Thank you. John Denver?